In the absence of Mayor Shapiro, can I have a roll call, please, Jerry?
Sure. Mayor Shapiro is absent. Trustee Benton?
Here.
Trustee Berg?
Here.
Trustee Goldstone?
Here.
Trustee Greenberg?
Here.
Trustee Jacoby?
She's still trying to call in. We'll see.
Okay. She is going to be remote. And Trustee Oppenheim?
Here.
Literally here.
Noting that we have a quorum present and in person, would like a motion to elect a presiding officer pro tem, and Trustee Benton is the next in the cycle, and our alphabetical order is how we do this.
I would make... Go ahead.
I'll move to have Trustee Benton act as our mayor pro tem tonight.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Benton?
Yes.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Trustee Goldstone?
Yes.
Trustee Greenberg?
Yes.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Yes.
And Trustee Jacoby, are you in yet? But motion passes.
Okay. Motion for a pledge of allegiance. Please join us in the pledge of allegiance.
Stand for the pledge of allegiance, please.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Get to celebrate tonight. And Bob's a former tennis player, so we're just going to go all out on him.
Yes, I came in this evening in the lobby, and a group of very happy people were there. And I said, is the meeting going to be here tonight? And they said, well, not in the lobby. We're tennis. And I thought that was great, because I tried to play tennis at Highland Park High School when I was in high school there. And as I said, I joined the tennis team as a freshman, because the coach believed in playing as juniors and seniors. By the time I got to my junior year, we had a new coach who believed in playing as freshmen sophomores. So I lost on both ends. But I am delighted that we are in the same kind of a class with our tennis that I would like to have been in, and they are the IHSA Girls Championship High School Team. By the way, you've read a lot about coaches who have changed teams this year in football, and have made a fortune. I don't think that's worth...I don't think that's what our head coach is going to do. But Rich Koke was awarded the Illinois State High School Champion Girls Tennis Team Coach of the Year, and I'd like to recognize him as well. Would I have somebody come up and speak for the team?
And Bob, we've got a presentation to give the team. So if the team wants to come up, and the coach wants to come up, happy to do that. Come on, guys.
Come on.
Get one of these. These are going to be put on the front. Oh, yeah.
Awesome.
So we've got to get a picture of this one. Somebody's going to want to do this rhymes, heads, whatever. And on behalf of Mayor Shapiro, who could be here tonight, congratulations to you guys. Rock on! Somebody gets to speak to the team. This one goes home with you guys.
Why don't you tell us your names and what grade you're in? Come on.
My name is Anna Grace Dickinson, and I'm a senior at Deerfield.
My name is Jordan Cohen, and I'm a senior.
My name is Maya Krasny, and I'm a junior.
My name is Caroline Sheehan, I'm a junior.
All right.
My name is Gail Harvey, and I'm a senior.
I am Coach Rich Koke.
Hey, Rich.
I have to acknowledge our coaching staff as well. Coach Lisa Christ, Coach Amy Young, and Coach Juliet Plonsker. In regards to this season, obviously, it was a great season, but the main thing is, I'm really proud of these girls, because they put the effort in the whole season. And there are other girls here on the team. Could you stand up, other girls that are on the team, please? Who are they? Come on. Our team was not only the six girls that represented us that stayed, there were the 14 girls that were composed our team, you know, the course of the year. So they deserve kudos as well, but I'm proud of these girls. We accomplished a lot this year. They worked hard, and it was a great season. So, girls, congratulations. And thank you. That sign is great.
Awesome. Awesome. Congratulations, guys. It's awesome.
Thank you.
They've got their sign to take.
That's your sign to take.
Somebody's got to take that sign.
You guys, we have another one we'll put up on a post.
Yeah, we'll mount them on the corners. Who wants it?
No, take it to school.
I'm going to put this at my house in Libertyville.
Don't you dare. Take it to the high school.
And I'm delighted that we've got juniors on the team that are going to carry this tradition on next year, and look forward to being here for the same ceremony once again.
No pressure.
We're a little late on this, because the main storm went through over the last couple of days, and we don't have too much out there. But we want to recognize our extremely able maintenance staff that was out plowing the streets and getting ready, and Bob Phillips, who is in charge of this. Give us a recap on how we did.
And I also thought it was a good opportunity, just to remind people how we respond to storms.
Right.
Because we got a couple of calls, why didn't you just keep clearing my cul-de-sac? Well, we don't just keep clearing your cul-de-sac, because we've got to open it up, and then we've got to open up other stuff. There's a reason why we do what we do. So that's part of what's going on tonight. And we also want to thank those people who didn't park their cars in the street during the snowstorm, because we had several people parking in the street to protect their driveways from getting the public works pushing the snow in. So, not a good idea, folks, because we'll ticket you, and we did. So, Bob.
Thank you, sir. So I'll start out just real quick on leaf collection, because they kind of blend, leaf collection and then the beginning of the snow season kind of blend together. So, very rudimentary information about leaf collection for everybody listening. Leaf collection always begins four weeks before Thanksgiving, as standard. It's always four weeks before. And so the fourth week of leaf collection is the week of Thanksgiving. It's a short week.
Thanks, guys.
It's only three days in that week, obviously, that the folks are working. But we do make a pass by each home on their given day that last week. So we try to clear everything out the last week, the week of Thanksgiving, even though it's a three-day week. Usually what we do is we kind of, it's a judgment call, and Kent and I will talk, and we'll talk with the group, when we figure out whether we're going to extend leaf collection or not. We've extended it up to six weeks. But we know that there's a certain volume of leaves that we collect every year. And we know based on volume whether we're done or not. And so typically, we're in the 7,500 to 7,000, somewhere in that range on cubic yards. And so if we collect 7,000 to 7,500, we know we're pretty much done. You know, there's going to be some piles out there, but generally speaking, that's it. This year, on the last week, on the week, the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, we collected about 7,100. And so we know there's some piles left out there, because we observed some. But we also know that the program was relatively complete at that point. What a lot of people don't understand or don't know is that the same trucks that do leaf collection and equipment and manpower that's doing leaf collection is the same group that's doing snow removal. And so it is really critical for us to find the right opportunity to remove all the leaf collection equipment from our trucks, and then switch everything over, get plows on our trucks, and get ready to do leaf, to do snow removal. And so, you know, kind of trying to time that is always a little bit tricky. In this case, our team came in on Friday after Thanksgiving, and they transitioned all of our trucks and equipment over to snow removal equipment. This snowfall was a little bit unusual, as, you know, we don't normally have a snowfall this early, this significant, and this early in the season. Usually, most of our heavy snowfall will happen in January and February, even into March. We don't normally see a large accumulation in November and December, so it's a little bit unusual. But we had that Friday after Thanksgiving for folks to come in, for our team to come in, and do that transition. And then, you know, taking all the equipment, transitioning it over, putting plows on trucks, getting salt loaded up, and getting ready to go for Saturday. And that really kind of set the stage for us on Saturday. Saturday, one observation that we made was, you know, it's early in the season, obviously, in the first snowfall, kind of. We did have a snowfall before, but the first significant snowfall, a lot of cars parked out. A lot of cars parked, and mostly parked on the upstream sides of driveway, so that they're blocking the snowplow, as Kent mentioned, from making their pass through. And that blocks the windrow, you know, from going onto their driveway apron. You know, thank you, a great thank you to the police. You know, I shot an email over to them and noticed them out and about later in the day, as things kind of wound up a little bit, issuing tickets or warnings or whatever the police normally do. And I know they were out in force, so thank you to the Police Department for taking care of that. So typically, what we do, you know, and what we did with this storm, is usually, as we're having a storm coming in right now, we'll have the four main salters come in. And so this is the four large trucks that we have, they're five-ton trucks, and they're loaded with salt, and they've got a plow on them. They're clearing mains, so they're hitting Waukegan, Deerfield, Greenwood, Hazel, what we would consider our main streets. And they'll work on that, you know, until we get to the point where they can't keep up with salt, or with the snow, just by salt and plowing. And so the side streets start to accumulate, and that's when we'll call everybody in. So, as in Saturday, we called in the main salters around eight, nine o'clock in the morning, six, seven o'clock in the morning, let's say. They worked most of the morning, doing their, keeping Waukegan Road, Deerfield Road, Greenwood, Noelwood, the mains, keeping all those streets kind of open and moving. And at two o'clock in the afternoon, we called in the remainder of our crew. So that means basically all hands on deck. So we have about 20 people come in, you know, to do snow removal at that point. Those guys have worked from two o'clock in the afternoon until about six o'clock in the morning the following day. Okay? And so the way they normally do it is, so I mentioned the main trucks, those four dedicated trucks will stay on Deerfield, Waukegan, and the large roads. Then the smaller trucks will come in, they start to hit what we would say are local collectors. You know, you've got Central Avenue, you've got Hackberry, you've got things like that. They start to clear those. The other guys will come in and start, so everything will get one pass, you know, they'll make one pass through, and start opening roads up, so people can get out, if they have to get to work, they have to get to an event, they have to get to things like that. We'll get them out of their house at least. Over the extended period of time, we'll go from, you know, the mains, and then the collector routes, to side streets, and then to cul-de-sacs, and then to alleys. Those are kind of, that's kind of our mode of operation. And so it's kind of based on order of magnitude and use of the road. So, the more heavily trafficked the road is, then the more likely we are to clear it first, and to keep it open, because people are trying to get to that road to get somewhere else. At the very end, we'll usually send a team of two people, sometimes three, out to do sidewalks. And so we do have about 25 to 30 linear miles of sidewalk that we do. Generally, those are leading up to and away from schools and other areas where there's heavy pedestrian activity. So we do clear all of Waukegan Road, we do clear all of Lake Cook Road, we do Deerfield Road, so those are the mains. And then all around all the schools, sometimes around the house of worship, you know, we'll do. But we have an approved map, where the guys will follow that approved map. And so we try not to vary from it if we don't have to. It's always subject to change, but it's been pretty solid for the last, say, 10 years or so. We haven't really changed much on that. In the past storm, so when we have a storm that's very significant and long-lasting, like the one that we had on Saturday, where it started snowing at like 6:00 a.m. on Saturday, and then went into 6:00 a.m. on Sunday, and we still had some flurries lingering, usually we'll burn a lot more rock salt on those storms, and a lot more liquid. And so, and by liquid, I mean, you know, the liquid salt brine, or calcium chloride, whatever it is we're using based on temperature, what the ambient temperature is, and what the pavement temperatures are. In this case, 400 tons is the amount of rock salt that we used, which pretty much clears out one bin in the public works storage.
All right.
You know. So, we do have a lot more rock salt still, obviously, and we have more than we can order. And so, but this was, you know, a long sustained event. Typically, we're burning through a lot of rock salt. We burned through about 2,000 gallons of liquid during this event as well. And so, you know, we're using liquid, we're using rock salt during these events. If we get a really quick blast, clearly, we're coming in, we're going to plow, and then we're going to salt at the end, and then we're going to use a lot less. You may also think that, you know, a smaller event, like the one that we're having tonight, and so we're going to get, you know, somewhere in the, I'd say, two to four inches of snow tonight, and it's starting to accumulate already. You may think that, you know, maybe we'll use less rock salt. Not really the case. We could use 400 tons of rock salt tonight. It just depends on the length of the storm and how well the rock salt works. You know, sometimes, just based on the temperature outside, you know, if it's starting to get colder, it's not going to work as well. If the temperature's right around 28 degrees, 25, 28 degrees, it's going to work really well. And so that's when, you know, that's when we'll start to use less. There's no real science to that, it's just a matter of what we think works, and how we apply. We'll dial it up or dial it down, depending on what we think is working. So, with that, we have had, you know, a number of people call in, email in about our plowing operation, and why we didn't plow a cul-de-sac, you know, we didn't continuously plow that cul-de-sac, or why we ended leaf collection. In fact, spoke with two or three people today about leaf collection, and why we ended leaf collection. I think if you look outside, you understand, there's a windrow of snow, there's 12 inches of snow on the ground, obviously, leaf collection is clearly over. And so, same with, you know, now we're transitioned over into snow. So the guys will end up going over, you know, so the routes are basically at the end of the event, like tonight, they'll be, our team will walk away, everything's been plowed, including alleys, cul-de-sacs, sidewalks will get touched up. Generally speaking, you know, so we have parking lots as well, that we own and maintain. All that'll get cleaned up. But then, you know, usually our team will come back in, you know, say, four o'clock tomorrow morning, five o'clock tomorrow morning, try to touch everything up again before the morning commute, and make sure that everything's looking and riding well before the morning commute starts.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Absolutely.
It seemed like we opened up Hazel right before this event. Did any of the salt, did we have any impact because of that brand-new road?
Well, we're really lucky to have pavement down. We had, we were paving, the contractor was paving on Friday. And as a matter of fact, the pavement was still hot on Saturday, and they didn't have to plow a section of it, because it was still
Oh, that's funny.
melting, because the pavement was too hot, it was still cooling down. But as of right now, you know, there's a section of it that still needs a surface course on it. We have base course down, but there's still about that much left to pave. And so we'll pave that in the spring. And the remainder of it is just like any other road. And so it's operable, and it's just as good as anything else that we have in the village.
And it didn't need to cure, like, you know, you worry about the temperature dropping so fast.
No, but asphalt doesn't cure like concrete does.
Okay.
And so even the concrete curbs are cured, and they're not being driven on typically. But the asphalt, once it's placed and rolled, it's fine to drive on.
Okay, good. And you know, people do have an option, if they have piles of leaves, as you've told them, I know, they can put it in their compost bin, they can put it in the leaf bags, and put it out for LRS, and the refuse, the garbage people will pick it up, still.
Yeah, the only issue right now is that...
It's mixed with snow.
Correct.
Right.
We had ours out, and we didn't have time to put it in the paper bags. We have the bags.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, if you have bags, and you're able to get them in the bags, LRS will take, will collect that up to December 15th.
Right.
They do the compost bin throughout the year, throughout the entire year, so.
And the leaves are really good for your garden and for your lawn. So if they stay, it's not a bad thing.
Okay. Thank you, Mary.
Bob, thanks to you and your team. They did an amazing job over the weekend. And what I also remind the board is that our team committed their holiday weekends
Yeah.
working for us. They weren't with their families, they were working for us, because that's what they do. So, Bob, thank you to your team
Yep, thank you. It's our pleasure.
For their commitment. And it's not a pleasure, but thank you for your commitment.
Amazing.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I did notice also, leading up to the holiday, that the team seemed to have put in some additional hours to get whatever leaves were there.
Yes.
I did notice that, too.
They were working overtime.
Yeah.
Trying to, you know, get everything in tip-top shape before the holiday, and clearly, those long hours coupled with the snow removal, it's a big lift, so.
Yeah.
As Kent said, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Well, the guys aren't going to complain about their paychecks.
Yeah.
But, you know.
That does help.
Thank you all.
And every Tuesday morning, there is a meeting of the old timers, the seniors, at Patty Turner. And some time ago, and I've been attending faithfully over the years, some time ago, we had two ladies who were in charge of Patty Turner, and at one point, one of them always said, "We always know when we're in Deerfield, because I live in Northbrook, and as soon as I cross the line, the streets are clean." And I've taken that kind of as my watchword, that we are appreciated, and your department is similarly appreciated for the work that they do. We have now a presentation of a fundraiser check to the Cancer Wellness Center.
Brian, Lauren? This is the Pink Patch thing, for those of you guys who are seeing what this is.
Good evening. The Police Department is here today with Carrie Callis, Executive Director of the Cancer Wellness Center, and Officer Maldonado, our spearhead in this fundraising aspect, to share our accomplishments through the Pink Patch Project Initiative. Little history, in 2022 is when we began this, and on this crusade, this mission, and to help the Cancer Wellness Center in Northbrook, as they assist not only people battling cancer, but also their families. Throughout the month of October, we, as a department, organized two key events to raise awareness and funds for the Cancer Wellness Center, along, going in line with the National Coffee with a Cop in the beginning of October, and then Portillo's fundraiser at the end of the month. In the middle of the month, we teamed up with, or we jumped on the bandwagon with the Deerfield High School at one of their home football games, in order to partner with them, and also the Cancer Wellness Center. This year, the Deerfield Police Department, along with our partners, successfully raised $2,192.17. This contribution brings our four-year total to approximately $8,500. And through the commitment and generosity of our officers that partake, partners, and community members, we show together that we can try and make a difference in this. So, on behalf of the Deerfield Police Department, we would like to present this year's check for $2,192.17 to Carrie Callis.
Thank you so much to the Deerfield Police for spearheading this initiative. This is the fourth year that we've worked with them, and it's always been a pleasure to work with the Police Department. Just a quick few words about the Cancer Wellness Center. And first, let me say, in addition to the funds that are raised, the awareness spreading is just as important, so that people know that our services are just right down Lake Cook Road in Northbrook. And Deerfield is one of the top five communities that we're serving with our programs, that serve both patients, caregivers, and family members, from diagnosis all the way through survivorship, including bereavement services if you lose a loved one to cancer. We provide counseling, we have about 30 different support groups running, and we provide educational and wellness programs for people that are battling cancer. So, thank you again. Our services are completely funded by fundraising, so that there is no charge to patients and families as they go through this, since it's a very difficult time in their lives. So, thank you again. This makes a big impact for the center.
And before you go, which is awesome, if people are willing, I would like to ask people who are cancer survivors to raise their hands, if they're willing to do so. There's people in the room. I mean, you guys make a huge difference to a lot of us, so thank you for what you do.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
And let it be known that the Deerfield Police and the Village, their hearts are as large as that check is. We appreciate that. I also wanted to...
Got it? Thank you. That's for public comment.
Right. Wanted to let you know that we have a recap of the Field of Honor ceremonies.
Which we're going to do at the next, we're going to do that.
I was going to say, that's scheduled for the next meeting. So, to hear that, please come again in two weeks, and we will tell you all about it. And we would now look at the minutes of previous meeting, and I would accept a motion to approve.
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor? Say aye.
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 Motion passes. And next is bills and payroll.
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor? Or that's a roll call, sorry.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Trustee Goldstone?
Yes.
Trustee Greenberg?
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby?
Yes.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Yes.
And Trustee Benton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. And at this point in time, we move over to public comment on a non-agenda item. This is if you've come to talk about a non-agenda item, and when you come to the microphone, please identify yourselves by stating your name.
And Susan O'Malley has signed in to do so.
Yes. There we are.
Start the three-minute timer, please.
My name is Susan O'Malley, and I'm here again. The primary reason I'm coming for you this evening is to make sure, is everything okay?
Mm-hmm.
To make sure the Board of Trustees is made fully aware of the systematic failure of their policy of requiring permits. Last week, I shared with you some correspondence that I received via FOIA request between Harvey Bender, the Village, and the Briarwood Country Club. Some of the correspondence went back to 2001. That's how long we've been bringing issues, and Harvey Bender was the previous owner, that we've been bringing issues to the Village regarding what the club is doing over there. You would think that the Village would have a keen eye to enforce the permit requirements on the Briarwood Country Club. But to this day, 2025, end of 2025, it appears that the Briarwood Country Club is exempt from the permit requirements enforced on every other resident and entity in this community. It doesn't seem right to me. Almost every communication I've had with Bob Phillips results in him telling me that my property is a low point. He's not wrong, it is a low point. But it doesn't give the Briarwood Country Club license to break the law. The Illinois Drainage Law is clear. It's adopted by Lake County, as well as the Village of Deerfield. You may not take storm water from your property and put it on your neighbor's property and harm your neighbor. Very specifically, you may not increase the rate of flow of that water. Where has Deerfield been since 2001, while the country club has been doing this? Where they've been is, they don't know, because the country club doesn't have to get a permit. So the Village actually doesn't know the extent of the drought. So the Village actually doesn't know the extent of the drain tile laid beneath the course. How would they know if the club doesn't get a permit? So that's a dilemma, and here we are, in 2025, it's still a problem. And I've witnessed two projects. I have pictures, I brought the pictures to you, I've showed you the pictures, truckloads of drain tile being laid. But nobody does anything. They just let these guys do whatever they want. So my question to you is, for all the permits applied for, according to your ordinance, pardon me?
Apologies, the three-minute timer has ended.
Oh, okay. Okay. I do have one more thing. The mayor addressed me out of my three minutes last time, and I would just like to respond because it had to do with, I'll just take a minute. It had to do with the agreement that the club gave me. And so the mayor, last meeting, said to me outside of the three minutes that there's three parties involved in this arrangement. 520 Briar Hill, the Briarwood Country Club, and the Village. So the Village has the grant money. The club has broken the law, but they have the land. Yet they want me to sign an agreement with the club, which makes no sense at all. And if you think about it, what incentive does the club have to sign any agreement with me? I don't have the money to do the project. I don't have the grant money, and I can't get the grant money, only the Village can. So why would I sign an agreement with the club? The Village needs to sign an agreement with the club because it's not my land.
I think what we need to do is continue the follow-up because all sides should be in agreement. And I will pass that on to the mayor. And mayor, I think we'll bring together the country club and the Village in one way or another, and I hope we'll get back to you shortly.
Okay. Well, I'll wait to hear then, and hopefully I won't have to take up three more minutes of your time.
That's all right. That's what we're here for.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, we have no more comment, no more non-agenda item comment that I have. Yes, and if there is anybody else that has a non-agenda item to talk about, please let me know, and we'll handle that. Okay, well, we're moving on now. And our first item under reports is consideration and action on the report and recommendation of the Family Days Commission, the 2026 budget. Michael Brum.
And Michael is our management analyst that works in Public Works and Engineering. And of course, Angie is Angie, who's Ms. Deerfield USA.
Yes.
No, no, no.
Good evening, Village Board. Yes, I'm Michael Brum. I'm here to provide an overview of the proposed Family Days budget for 2026. At the October 20th, 2025 meeting, Family Days Commission reviewed the 2025 financials and unanimously approved a proposed budget for the 2026 event. A review of 2025 financials revealed that the total event expenses were $124,746. The event revenues totaled $36,393, and this resulted in a net cost of $88,352 to the Village. These numbers reflect the increasing costs associated with hosting a multi-day community celebration. For 2026, the Commission is proposing a total expense budget of $138,350, total revenues of $41,400, which results in a net cost proposed to the Village of $96,950. This does represent an increase from last year, largely due to rising vendor costs, inflation, and overall just prices of materials, labor, and everything being increased. Two of the most notable increases are in the fireworks and the parade costs. The fireworks are proposed to increase from $36,500 to $40,000. The parade costs are proposed to increase from $20,000 to $30,000. Again, these price increases reflect vendor pricing being increased and just a result of inflation and costs going up. We are continuing the two-day band format on July 3rd, which was highly successful last year, last year, excuse me, to help bring in more families earlier in the evening. The opening band this year will be a Taylor Swift cover band. The intention is to try and bring people into the event early so that they can stay throughout the duration until the fireworks show. As event costs continue to rise, staff is working with the Commission to develop a more robust special events program. A major focus for 2026 is expanding sponsorship opportunities to help offset the increasing expenses. We're confident that shrinking sponsorships will support long-term sustainability for Family Days event. That concludes the overview of the 2026 Family Days budget. We do thank you for the board's continued support through our special events and in our Family Days event. Happy to turn over for questions, or if Angie has anything to add.
I got a question.
Yes, ma'am.
With the brochure, what happened?
Why was it so expensive versus what was budgeted?
And yet now we've budgeted back close to what we had budgeted this year. Was there some kind of a glitch that we think we won't add next year?
Design layout, formatting it.
It just took more than we thought.
Yes.
And we redid it.
Yes, it was totally rebranded.
So next year, we shouldn't have that issue.
You're not redoing it.
And we'll be doing it in-house.
Oh, that's great. That's great. All I can tell you is that the single most unanimous comment I have ever gotten from a resident in this community is that the fireworks are worth every penny that we spend on them. Everybody is happy with the fireworks, right? And if we need to increase the budget a little bit, I think that's okay. Everybody is very, very happy with the fireworks. So. And the two bands, that worked great, too. Because not only does it get people to the event early, it keeps them at shepherd so that there is not that mass exodus to the parking lot. Well, there's still a mass exodus, but it's not as bad as it was. Right. And it prolongs the evening for a lot of people, which is great. Which is great. This is, we do a lot of good for this amount of money.
It's community building, right?
Yep.
We talk about that as a group. How do we celebrate Deerfield? This is one of the ways we celebrate Deerfield.
Right.
Providing that event.
Right.
Any other trustee comments? I feel very fortunate because I can go around and around the corner where I live and sit on the driveway of friends of ours and watch the show, and it was marvelous. It was much of the quality that we always expect from that. So I congratulate you for that. Any other comments from the public? All right, I would accept a motion to accept or deny the report. A second, and then we'll have a roll call vote.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
All right, roll call vote.
Trustee Goldstone?
Yes.
Trustee Greenberg?
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby?
Yes.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Yes.
Trustee Benton?
Yes.
And Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And before we leave that subject, we have a recognition of somebody who has been kind of the head of this for quite a while. Judy Guder is the person who is in charge, and we would like to formally recognize her for the service to the Family Days Commission.
Hey, Judy.
So before we honor this amazing woman, I just have a few things that I'd like to say. On behalf of Deerfield Family Days Commission, I want to extend our deepest appreciation to the Village of Deerfield, to the Board, Fire Department, Police Department, my list is very long, Public Works, Justin, Jessica, and now Mike, your partnership and dedication to one of our community's most cherished traditions. Family Days is more than a celebration, it's a reflection of what makes Deerfield so extraordinary. I'm going to cry. Well, tonight, we also gather to honor someone incredibly special, Judy Guder. Judy's 14 years of leadership have helped shape Deerfield Family Days into what it is today. Judy has been the backbone of arts and crafts, parade, and co-chair. Judy, you have been an asset to the Family Days, to me, and to our community. Thank you for giving so much of yourself to Deerfield. We are grateful for all you have done to Deerfield Family Days. We are honored to have Judy as our 2026 Deerfield Family Days Parade Marshal. Congratulations. Judy, would you like to bring up your family?
Bring up your family?
Yes.
Do you want to take a photo? Come on up, family. Our new.
It is my particular pleasure to give this to a very dear friend and somebody I have worked with as a volunteer for many, many years. Besides all the things that Judy has done for Family Days, she has been a volunteer in this community, in the Optimist Club, she's currently the president of the Friends in the Library. Nobody has contributed more and volunteered more in Deerfield than this woman. She's been steadfast, and kind, and caring, and smart, and always there. And that kind of giving and volunteerism is what makes this community as special as it is. Just as Ian said. So it is my particular honor to give this to you to show our love and appreciation to Judy and all she's done for the Village and for the community all these years. Thank you.
Judy, Judy, Judy.
Thank you. Excuse me. I don't know what to say. I love Deerfield. I've lived here almost 45 years, and it is the best place to live. My son, Brandon, his wife, Kelly, my grandkids, Gemma and Bo, live in Deerfield. My son works in Deerfield. The kids go to school in Deerfield. They actually go to the school where my son went to school. My journey actually started in the late 90s, when Brandon was still in school. My dear, dear friend, Barbara Rich, who most of you know, called me and said, "So, what are you doing Tuesday night?" And that was the beginning of a very, very long journey, started with the Friends of the Arts at the high school, and just kept on snowballing forward. So, thank you. I really appreciate it. It's not the end. You'll still see me around. But thank you. This means a lot.
Thank you.
Our next item is the consideration and action on Plan Commission's recommendation on the request for a finding of substantial conformance for a final development plan for the 112-unit residential plan, unit development, and a Primrose Child Care Center and Nursery School located at 155 Finkston Road, and approval of the final plat of subdivision for the property. Kent?
Plan Commissioners are recommending approval of the petitioner's desire that their final development plan for 112 multifamily rental development and a Primrose Child Care and Nursery School is in substantial conformance with their previously approved preliminary development plan. The plan includes 11 affordable units, which complies with the Village's affordable housing ordinance. The building height, building elevations, landscaping, and vehicular access points have not changed from the preliminary development plan to the final development plan. The petitioner is also seeking approval of the final plat of the subdivision of their property. And the Plan Commission, at their last consideration, voted 6-0 to recommend approval. And Member Keefe is with us tonight if there are any questions for the Plan Commission.
And I note that in this report, they did respond to some of the requests that we made here at the last board meeting where they appeared, where we asked for them to install, if they could, more electric car chargers. And they did do that.
The signal for the crossing.
Uh-huh.
Yep.
Yeah.
Which I was very pleased to see.
I saw that, and I was also pleased.
And I was, too, because I probably am the closest resident to that development. And it's a real good development, in my judgment. And I would also like to ask if there was to be a safety island on the pedestrian crossing. It's a kind of a complicated curve where Finkston meets Cates. And there was a safety island that was going to go along with the pedestrian signal. And I'm.
And Bob, let me interrupt. I think, Bob Phillips, I'm going to ask you a question. I think they agreed to install what we recommend to be installed. But I don't know that there's an island in the median there. Is there a safety point? There's flashing signals, but I don't know that there's a.
There is a refuge proposed?
Yes. Okay. Yeah.
So it's similar to.
There is a what, Bob?
A refuge.
There currently.
Similar to what there is at Deerfield and Johnquill.
Yeah.
And then the crossing, the rapid rectangular flashing beacon, which is also similar to what there is at Johnquill, Deerfield Road and Johnquill. This particular location will have an advanced warning. So as you're coming westbound from the bridge, as you mentioned, Bob, there's a sightline visibility issue.
Right.
And so the flashing beacon will be well in advance of the intersection, allowing people to know that there's a crossing pedestrian.
So Bob, it's different than Deerfield Road, right? So Deerfield Road, you have the signals themselves. But in this particular instance, because of the curve and the grade change, you're going to have an advanced signal warning that there's a flasher coming.
That's correct. Right. And we felt that that was. So the developer proposed that originally, and that was a great proposal for this location. And we highly, we agree with it, so.
That's great.
I agree.
Any other questions?
Any trustee comments on this item that haven't been?
No, I echo what Mary said. I was very happy to see those changes.
I was, too. Any other public comments? Okay, I would accept a motion for the request, to accept or deny the request, and a second, and we'll have a roll call vote.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Berg?
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby?
Yes.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Yes.
Trustee Benton?
Yes.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Trustee Goldstone?
Yes.
Motion passes.
So we will be working with Ben on the development agreement and ordinances that will come back before the board, probably at the next meeting, but potentially the first meeting in January. But we're working with the development team to make sure that all those items are buttoned up as has been agreed to. Thank you.
All right, we have no items on the consent agenda, so we go now to old business. And an ordinance levying taxes for 2026, excuse me, for the fiscal year commencing January 1st, 2026, and ending on December 31st, 2026. Eric?
Thank you. Two items tonight related to each other. One presentation here. The first is the ordinance levying taxes. The second would be an ordinance abating a portion of the 2025 tax levy requirements for Series 2011B GO bonds. That relates to the qualified energy conservation bonds that we've had for several years now. We get 70% of that interest back from the federal government. So since we have an alternative revenue source, we abate those or remove those from the tax levy. But we have to do it in two separate steps, as we've done in the past. Both of these items were discussed in detail at the committee of the whole meetings. We held a public hearing at the last board meeting, and there's been no changes, and I received no comments since that last public hearing. Happy to answer any questions, but we've talked about this one a few times now.
Any questions from trustees?
Nothing's changed.
Any question from the public? I think we can treat these together with separate motions to accept and go on a roll call vote, accept or deny. So this for item 2599, the ordinance levying taxes for next year.
Move approval of the ordinance to levy taxes.
Second.
Trustee Jacoby?
Yes.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Yes.
Yes.
Trustee Benton.
Yes.
Trustee Berg.
Yes.
Trustee Goldstone.
Yes.
And Trustee Greenberg.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Now we'll have a motion to accept or deny the ordinance abating the portion of the 2025 tax levy requirements for the Series 2011B GO bonds.
Move approval.
Second.
Trustee Jacoby.
Yeah.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Yes.
Trustee Benton.
Yes.
Trustee Berg.
Yes.
Trustee Goldstone.
Yes.
And Trustee Greenberg.
Yes.
Motion passes.
And Bob, just as a reminder to the board, as Eric's leaving, remember, we got those bonds, energy conservation bonds, I'll say 1.75%. Eric, it was less than 2% that we paid on those bonds, based on the federal government's plan.
Definitely less than 2%. We get about $350,000 back from the federal government each year that we have those 17-year bonds, so we're getting close to 2028, but that's worked out very well for us.
Just a reminder, the rate is awesome.
That's the only...
And we thank State Senator Susan Garrett at the time, who helped us tee up with the Illinois Finance Authority to get that. And we effectuated that with Harriet and Eric. It was awesome. It saved us many, many dollars.
All the other bonds that we have issued around about that time have been refinanced, and this one was so good that we just haven't, hasn't made sense to do that yet. So it was a very good deal.
It was a great deal. We got a good help in getting that deal. And so your treatment plan got paid for for less than 2% bonds, which is pretty amazing.
Pretty awesome.
Sorry, just wanted to throw that out there, just to remind you guys.
Next item is a resolution approving a concession agreement with Cave Cafe LLC for the lease and operation of a concession stand at the downtown train station. We've had a series over the years that have come along.
Yep.
But I'm delighted to find a new operator coming in, so.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Board. As you all know, for decades, the downtown metro station has included a coffee vendor. Our previous coffee vendor closed in June of this year. I have Pawan Sharma here with me. Him and his wife are both Deerfield residents and owners of Cave Cafe LLC. They're proposing to open a new coffee shop in the space starting January 1st, and the shop would operate weekday mornings. The lease agreement would be for a year with the first two months free rent, and then $500 there on after. And I have Pawan Sharma here with me if you have any questions.
My only question is, will you have newspapers available also?
I will try for that also. I'm thinking about that. We have the vending machines and the coffee shop and the paper newspapers.
Wonderful.
Thinking about that.
And Bob, how many days do you go take the train down a week now?
Now I don't do it, but I did faithfully for many, many years.
At least 50.
Yep. Any other comments?
And just from a staff perspective, we're delighted to have somebody that wants to provide coffee again in the train station.
Right.
You guys remember COVID, people started picking it up at Starbucks, walking to the train station. We didn't have a coffee vendor, and it's just part of that experience. We'd like to have a coffee vendor at the train station. Just as a reminder, we lease the train station from Metro, and we operate it and clean it and take care of it, and so having a coffee vendor that helps support that experience is something that we think is good for us. So we're delighted to have local residents who want to provide coffee and do that service in the morning for our commuters.
That's great.
Hearing no other comments, I'll ask for a motion to accept or deny the resolution, and a second and a roll call vote.
Move approval of the resolution.
Second.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Yes.
Trustee Benton.
Yes.
Trustee Berg.
Yes.
Trustee Goldstone.
Yes.
Trustee Greenberg.
Yes.
And Trustee Jacoby.
Yeah.
Motion passes.
Wonderful.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
We'll see you on January 1st. Next item is resolution for maintenance on the state highway. Bob, back again.
Thank you, Mayor Proton. As you know, Waukegan Road is owned by the state of Illinois, and so that's Waukegan Road for the entire village limits, all the way from where Deerbrook Mall is, Chestnut Street down there, Beechnut Street, actually, all the way north to the Deerfield High School, where our limits end. We have two maintenance agreements for Waukegan Road. One maintenance agreement was approved, and they're approved every other year. One was approved this year in February, so February of 2025, and that's for maintenance of the section of Waukegan Road from Beechnut Street near Deerbrook Mall, all the way up to Deerfield High School. Okay, so that's a little bit different maintenance agreement. That's maintenance of the highway, so it's plowing. It's also minor roadway patches, some drainage improvements, you know, cleaning drain, pothole patching, pavement marking, things like that. So we are paid by the state of Illinois to do those items. About five or six years ago, the state was having trouble plowing this particular section, which is from Deerfield High School approximately up to where Mariano's is, so around Illinois 22. That's, you know, there was our section that was always plowed real nice, and that section, which was never touched until, you know, a later date when the state had forces to get there and plow it. They approached us and asked us to perform maintenance of just snow and ice control in that area, which we agreed to. So there's the second agreement, okay? So first agreement is for that southern section, and it's a little bit more extensive. There's a dollar amount involved with that. And then also with this section, which is just for snow and ice control, which is $6,900 per year. It's not a huge dollar amount, obviously, but it covers, you know, our rock salt and our liquid. And so with that, this is an every-two-year. In fact, I think this is a 10-year agreement now, so we don't have to come back to the board for 10 more years, but it's like $69,000 for the 10-year agreement, and technically, this agreement needs to come in front of the board for approval.
And Bob, when we went through this, what happened was the state actually wasn't getting to do it. They didn't get to it. They didn't have the people. So they talked to us, they talked to the city of Lake Forest. City of Lake Forest agreed to come down to 22. We agreed to go north to 22, and largely in part to get people to our high school, to get people to our businesses. We didn't want that safety issue to be out there, because there was a clear, you could see it if you were driving it. And Bob, from our standpoint, we were extending our current routes, so it was, you know, so we're already out there on Waukegan Road doing the multi-truck thing, and Lake Forest is doing the same thing. So we just thought that this was a better, this was a good solution.
Yeah.
To solve that problem.
And we turn around at Mariano's anyway. So we may as well keep the plows down and go. You know, our guys know that they're, you know, they know that our limits, and they'll lift the plows. They aren't going to, they aren't going to go beyond our limits, but in this case, you know, they're turning around at Mariano's, they're plowing all the way to Mariano's, and they're making that sweep coming all the way back around, so.
And it's about, you know, safety to schools. It's about all that stuff, just solve the problem, which is what you guys ask me to do all the time, right? So solve the problem, and this was part of that, and we felt it was a good solution that we could accomplish.
I think it is a good solution, and I'm glad we're doing it. It's obviously very important. Just a couple of questions. One, why just snow and ice control? Why not the other items that include south of that section? Secondly, if I am not mistaken, the amount we're being paid by the state is a static amount annually? Why is there no escalator? On an annual basis to account for all sorts of things?
Yeah.
Inflation being the most concerning element?
Okay, so to answer your second question first, there is an escalator.
Okay.
And so the $69,140 is an estimate, and they do, they do have an escalator based on the CPI, and that's in the agreement.
Okay. Wonderful.
Yeah. Okay. The first, the first question, that section of Waukegan Road is outside of village limits.
Yeah.
And so we don't, we don't want to maintain anything that's outside of our limits.
Okay.
And so while, you know, while, you know, we could do it, you know, it wouldn't be that big of an issue, we just don't because it's outside of corporate limits.
Well, it belongs to the village of Bannockburn.
It does.
Yeah.
And Bannockburn was after us for many years to plow their roads and everything like that, and we just, you know, we obviously can't do that, but so we pushed back.
But we have a separate agreement to maintain Waukegan Road otherwise, right?
Yes, sir.
I mean, we get funded from IDOT to take care of the other stuff.
Yes.
The rest of the roadway? And again, is it, does it pay for it? I don't know.
It still just barely covers our costs, you know, but I think, you know, we're here. We're really capable of doing these things, and we keep a close eye on it. We want, we wanted things to look nice. We want things to operate well, and so, you know, we get a little bit of money. It helps cover some of the costs. Some years we lose money on it, some years we gain money on it, so it works out for us in the end.
Jesse, it's a great question, and I think part of what you'll see is that they bumped the MFT amounts over the last few years to help us, support us. So the state's trying, I think they're trying to give us the revenue, but they can't hire the people.
Right.
They just, they just can't.
And they can't buy equipment.
So it's like, for us, it's like, do I want it crappy out there so that people are unsafe? No. On the other hand, should we get paid for what we do? Yeah. So that's kind of our constant ask, is just keep making us whole, right? Don't, you're asking us to take this responsibility, on which we're glad to do because we think it's important, but the right question is keep making us whole, right?
Well, I think you hit it on the head. I just want to make sure that it's not a, while it's the right thing to do, and the state should concentrate clearly on state road, state routes and interstate and so forth, I just want to make sure we're not losing money on this venture.
Not digging a hole, right?
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah. I would say it's close. It's a pretty close break even. Like I said, it pays for rock salt and liquid, and that's about, you know, is it covering all of our labor? Maybe not, but we are turning around at Mariano's anyway, so it's likely a wash.
And people also think it's us. People don't think it's like that.
Yeah, we've had a lot of complaints.
They don't. They just...
We used to get a lot of complaints about that section.
That's what people think. We just don't with it.
But it is a service to our residents.
Yeah.
Our resident, we don't stop at the village's limits.
Tagline.
Many of us also go to Mariano's and turn around.
Right.
Which is a really good story.
Have your questions been answered?
Thank you, yes.
Okay. Any other questions?
All right.
We need a motion.
Hearing no more, hearing no more comments, I'd like a motion to treat this resolution to approval or deny.
So moved.
And vote.
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Benton.
Yes.
Trustee Berg.
Yes.
Trustee Goldstone.
Yes.
Trustee Greenberg.
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby.
Yeah.
And Trustee Oppenheim.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
And while you've got the microphone, Bob, don't leave. The next item is the resolution for the 2026 street rehab.
Yeah, I'll take this one. Fresh face, we're going to new meat. We're going to crank him out.
Good evening, Board. So with the expenditures that is proposed next year for the, for our street rehab project, we are required to pass a resolution from the state regarding our tensions with the MFT fund. So there are specific requirements that we have to meet, certain things we can and cannot spend them on, so this, this resolution not only states where we're going to spend them, but also in what manner. So our street rehab project next year, budgeted just over $3 million, $800,000 of that will come from MFT or motor fuel tax funding. Our scope of the work is our standard street rehab for next year. We have various locations of resurfacing, various locations of spot repair for maybe curb and sidewalk, and also the full shebang or the full reconstruction, ground up, new curbs, new sidewalks, new pavement, new roadways. So with that being said, staff's request from the mayor and village board, adopt the MFT resolution for the 2026 street rehab project, and once approved, we will start our review with IDOT and then look to get this project out on the street for bidding in January.
Tyler, is this a standard amount that we're doing?
So our annual allotment is about $800,000 a year. When I started, it was under, it was about $494, and then it's grown. If you remember, in 2019, Governor Pritzker signed the Rebuild Illinois Grant.
Yeah.
Program that had a direct impact on the MFT or the gas tax. And then there's also a CPI factor every July that is part of that, an increase annually. So it's went from half a million dollars 10 years ago to now to 800, and that, that will grow in future years annually.
It's about two miles a road, right?
Yep, just under.
Thanks.
Any other comments? We'll accept a motion to accept or deny the resolution, the second, and we'll take a roll call.
Move approval.
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Berg.
Yes.
Trustee Goldstone.
Yes.
Trustee Greenberg.
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby.
Yeah.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Yes.
And Trustee Benton.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
All right, the next, the next item of business, 25102, is a resolution in designating the delegate and alternate delegate to the Solid Waste Agency of the Lake County Swalco Board of Directors. Kent?
The village has been part of Swalco since its formation in the mid 80s, and I've been on the Board of Directors since 1993, being its chairman of the Executive Committee for probably 14 years of that time, and would recommend, this basic change is because we're adding Justin as the alternate. I'll still be the delegate, and we're still active participants, and I think you guys saw the value of this as we were renegotiating our contract with LRS. Swalco is a super intergovernmental agency that provides a lot of value to us, in my opinion, and we want to keep participating in that. So this puts me and Justin on the Board of Directors to continue forward.
Do we have a motion to accept or deny the resolution, and second, and then we'll take a roll call.
Move approval.
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Goldstone.
Yes.
Trustee Greenberg.
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby.
Yeah.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Yes.
Trustee Benton.
Yes.
Trustee Berg.
Yes.
Motion passes.
And finally, the ordinance, next up is the ordinance amending the village of Deerfield Wage and Salary Plan, which I suspect everybody's been waiting for out there.
And we've got a revised copy at your place tonight. We found three errors in this thing, so we're trying to fix those errors. That's what's going on.
That, that's, that's exactly it. The updated schedule is consistent with the 2026 budget items that we had, had talked about previously. This is just corrections of items that we missed.
Are there any trustee comments? Or public comments? There's no public presence, so we'll continue. A motion to accept or deny the ordinance, the second, and the roll call vote.
Move approval.
Second.
Greenberg.
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby.
Yeah.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Yes.
Trustee Benton.
Yes.
Trustee Berg.
Yes.
Trustee Goldstone.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Now we have a number of items for discussion, the mayor and those of us on the board. First one, and you don't need to comment unless you'd like to. The Deerfield Chamber of Commerce Holiday Luncheon is this Thursday from eleven-thirty to one-thirty at Ravine Green Country Club. The winter lighting celebration will be this Friday at Village Hall, from five to eight, with roasted chestnuts, Deerfield High School choraleers, ice sculptor, and more, and besides that, I think we'll have the mayor too, which is an extra, an extra attraction. After that, the winter market, which is this Saturday at Patty Turner, from nine in the morning until two PM, market vendors, children's activities, and live music. Following that, the Mayor Shapiro will drop the puck at the Hockey Showdown this Saturday at the Northbrook Sports Center at five-twenty PM, Deerfield Police Department and the Deerfield Bannockburn Fire Department versus the Deerfield High School Hockey Club. I will miss that, because I spent about twenty-five years refereeing hockey in and around this area. I'm a little unable to do that now.
I just don't want any workman's comp issues coming around.
And I've got the scars to prove it. And a board and commission reception for those of you who work in the commissions and do the important work that the commissions do, and the board, is this coming Sunday at five-seventy Lake Cook, up on the top floor Solarium from three to six PM. We would like to reward those of you who have worked so, so devotedly during the year, and we hope you're all going to be there. And lastly, the Northwest Municipal Conference Holiday Celebration is December tenth at